Does it say nine o'clock anywhere anybody's watched? I got it.
Sure.
Yep.
Let's have it. All right. Who wants to give us a prayer this morning?
I don't mind. Father, I just want to thank you dear Lord for this day and just thank you for the blessings you've given to us. Thank you for the moisture you sent our way. I pray to Lord protection over our country. I pray for our government dear Lord. I pray that you will give them the wisdom and the knowledge that they need that only comes from you. I pray to Lord for this court session. I pray for each gentleman here to make decisions that you will bless their decisions dear Lord. I pray that you will watch over and guide them as they're out working on the roads. Protect us dear Lord, we're in the courthouse. And I ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Your own pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the run, we are in a regularly scheduled Eastland County District Court meeting. It is October the eleventh, nine o'clock. And we do have a quorum, all commissioners here in county judge. Also the table of Kathy Jento, county clerk, and Sonia Neal Neal as the deputy auditor. So let's read and sign the minutes. I have two sets. Have a set of minutes from September the twenty-sixth, regular meeting, and minutes from special meeting on October the third. Do you have any questions or comments about those? None. Can we have a motion to accept those minutes as presented?
Motion seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that carries.
After thirty something years, I got smart and just left the attachments downstairs. They're killing my back.
Just thirty years?
Just thirty.
But you started when you were twelve, right?
Exactly. With work on it.
Yeah. There you go.
I trained at Eastland, yeah Judge, heard.
Uh, I don't know, two tents at one.
Two.
Two tents.
Cisco?
Well, we got two tents Sunday night. We got another good lane last night, but I didn't check today just morning.
Well, I sure kind of need to know that.
What did you get?
Four tents.
Oh, that's good.
What'd you get, Robert?
I didn't even look.
Well, look at this, Cisco, yes. Ain't much of rain. Well, I have to crutch out there still. I don't think it's worth it. I figured Robert would know.
Scooter can't make it.
Scooter, Scooter hits a four oh five. That's over by the goat pen.
Get your binoculars.
Yeah.
Hmm, I don't know if that'd work or not. All right, item number two is discuss, consider, and propose pending contracts and agreements that are not on the agenda. Anybody have anything to add today? All right, no action. Number two. Uh, number three is discuss, consider approving Kaime Satafi to the Child Welfare Board. Sandy Cagle? Miss Satafi here? No, she's not.
No, she's not. Just me. So we have another member for the Eastland County, uh, Child Welfare Board. And I don't know the lady. If I, I might know if I saw her, but the name doesn't ring a bell. So it's Kami Satafi, and she, right now she works for the Kinder Hearts Health Care.
Okay.
And she was also CPS. She used to work for CPS.
Okay.
So, yeah. So I would like for y'all to consider her on the board.
Okay. Can we have a motion then to appoint Kami Satafi to the Child Welfare Board?
Motion seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Is there anything that y'all need from us, or is everything going smoothly, or?
Uh, don't think anything that we need Sandy.
Okay.
Y'all need anything from the?
Child Welfare?
Child Welfare? Anybody?
No, my child not very good. Yeah, yeah.
Good deal. All right, thank y'all.
Great job. Thank you.
He's doing pretty good right now.
Yeah. Thank you for asking, no Miss Sandy.
Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Item number four is discuss, consider the status of signed contracts with entities for dispatch, fire departments, and EMS services. As of last, uh, meeting, let's see. We sent out all the fire department contracts now, and we received back Gorman, Olin, just got Olin's today, Ranger, and Rising Star. So we still need Carbon, Cisco, Desdemona, and Eastland. On EMS, we sent out the contract to the City of Ranger, and we've not received that yet. The cooperative EMS, Kathy's got that contract, and we'll be taking that up on a different item. And then on dispatch, we've gotten back, uh, the College, City of Rising Star, City of Gorman, City of Ranger. So that leaves the hospital, City of Eastland, City of Cisco. And that's where we are as far as the status of those contracts. And Kathy, I'm gonna go ahead and give these to you. This is, uh... Here's a placekeeper. I sent this out on October the third. Yeah, October third to the City of Eastland. That's a placekeeper for the Eastland contract. And here's ones that we've received. This is Rising Star. And this been signed off by everybody. And this is dispatch. With the College. There's that one.
Uh, Cisco?
Yeah, Cisco College. This is the Gorman BFD. It's been signed off. This is, uh, City of Ranger for dispatch. Okay. This is City of Gorman for dispatch. Let's see if you can.
Put that together?
Yeah. And this is Ranger VFD. And this is Rising Star Dispatch. So that should match up with ones I just named off.
And you got Olin's?
Olin is right here. And fully executed as well.
Get off that handle.
All right. All right. Any questions or comments? Then can we have a motion to accept all those contracts back in?
Motion seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign, and that carries.
And, uh, Shelby has copies of all these, correct?
All of them except your Olin contract.
Okay. I'm not sure she gets one.
Yeah, get me a copy back, and that'd be great.
Okay.
All right, that takes us to item number five. Discuss, consider, renewing a contract with Lexus Nexus for public terminal access in District Clerk's office. And Tessa can't be here today, so she asked me to present this. This is a contract that we've had with Lexus Nexus, uh, for library patron access. It gives the authority for her to set up the kiosk. It's funded by the Special Law Library for District Clerk Fund, and it did go up just a little bit. Let's see here. It went up about fourteen dollars a month. But that fund has got a large amount in it. Here's one. I was organized. I should be. I thought I had a copy of email. Did you get a copy of an email, anybody? That talks about it? It went up something like fourteen dollars a month. But as I say, it's a dedicated fund, and it'll be used for certain items, and that this is a, an agreed to, uh, true use of that fund. So with that, any questions or comments on the Lexus Nexus contract? Would the, uh, access for law records in Tessa's office?
No, sir.
All right. Can we have a motion then to enter into this agreement and allow Tessa to sign it?
Okay.
Okay, motion made and seconded, enter into the agreement and let, allow Tessa Coverhouse to sign the same. All in favor say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that carries. I just gave you one where, you want a placekeeper, or?
I got one.
You got one, okay. I'll get her to sign this, and she can get you a copy of it.
Sounds good.
Ten-four?
Ten-four.
All right. That takes us to number six. Open bids for asphalt service installation on County Road two ninety-four and award contract. And we've got some.
One bid.
Well, one bid, okay. And that was received by the deadline, all that?
Received, uh, September thirtieth, eight twenty-eight.
Okay. I know it ran in the paper because I saw it two times in there.
I got you.
There's, uh, affidavit and the questionnaires there, um...
Okay. Uh, and for the record, this is from Radon Incorporated out of Breckenridge. Uh, regarding Eastern County Road two ninety-four, installation of asphalt surface. A fractionally estimated twenty-two feet wide by one and a half mile long. Uh... Says on here, total of one dollar eighty-five cents per square foot. Uh, blade, shoot prime, compact, and cleanup. Got references from those one. They're assured to sign off on affidavit. And the conflict of interest questionnaire has been sent, I guess, but it's not been signed. So we just gotta get that signed, or somebody from Radon needs to get that signed. So with that, I don't know what the total amount of that is, but a dollar eighty-five per square foot, they're gonna calculate that. I would count it. Twenty-two feet wide and a mile is five thousand two hundred and eighty feet.
Yeah. Three twenty-two, three forty-four.
Three what?
Three twenty-two, three forty-four. Three hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars.
All right, and that's at a dollar eighty-five per square foot. All right.
Did you want to call Radon and have him come sign that conflict of interest, Sonia?
They need to come sign that.
Okay.
That's what they need to sign.
And then get it to me, and I'll make sure it's filed.
I'll get that done.
Thank you.
All right.
The... Because we don't have the budget yet, I guess that you're gonna contact the donor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, the donor can't pay the...
To Radon.
He can't pay directly to Radon. He's gotta go through the county, because he's donated money to the county, so.
Yes.
I guess if the donor's rated on it, he can donate it in, and we'll certify the funds.
Okay.
And then Radon will be ready to go. We've gotta get the notice of conflict signed first, but that won't take the...
I'll get that down just as soon as we're through. I'll call him.
All right, can we have a motion then to accept this proposal from Radon Incorporated out of Breckenridge for County Road two ninety-four?
And that's in precinct three, correct? Okay.
Precinct three.
I'll make you judge. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. It is unanimous. Um, I just have this one. Could you make us some more copies of that, maybe? I know Commissioner Wilson's gonna want one. Kathy needs one. I'd like to have one as well. Do y'all want one as well?
Me, Sonia, I'll take it. Michelle, I'll bet she'll, I got it.
Yep, she can.
And I'll get the original.
Yeah, well, I can take it. It doesn't matter. You need a copy?
I'll get the original.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll need to get him to sign the original and notice of conflict.
Yeah, I'll get that.
How many copies, Judge?
Uh, probably three.
Three, please, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, good deal. Hopefully weather will work for that now.
Anything, Judge.
All right, that's item number six. Item number seven is district clerk to file orders appointing assistant auditor Tracy Parker, uh, and auditor Loretta Key.
I do. Uh, Tessa's not here, so I'll present this order, uh, for Tracy Parker as accounts payable assistant auditor for Eastland. And Loretta Key for County Road.
You'll gotta think about that one minute.
I expected my phone to ring that then.
She might be watching?
Uh, she might, yeah.
All right, can we have a motion to, uh, accept both those orders and put them into the file? One, order appointing Tracy Parker as accounts payable assistant auditor. And one, appointing auditor, county, auditor Loretta Key.
I'll make you judge. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. And opposed, and that carries. All right. Item number eight is discuss, consider participation in the State of Texas Commercial Charge Card Program. Sonia, what do you have for us on that?
Loretta and Christina are seeking, I guess, permission or approval to apply or participate in the State of Texas Commercial Charge Card Program. The, uh, their plan is for, um, the courthouse to use this credit card and keep Sheriff's Office, uh, on the comdata.
Okay.
Okay.
Courthouse and Road and Bridge on this, on the, on the new card.
Okay.
Separate from Sheriff's Office.
And so the sheriff will have comdata, and R and B will have the new card for the state?
Yes.
Okay. We've gotta go through the application process for that. Okay, all right. So we need a motion then to, uh, participate in the State of Texas Commercial Charge Card Program.
And permission for you to sign.
And permission for me to sign.
I'll make you judge.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign, and that carries. And Sonia, you'll get that to me to sign whenever we get to that point.
And go get me a copy, please.
Okay.
Item number nine is discuss, consider the cooperative ambulance service contract. There's Jento that does this one. Uh, it is right here. Shelby's got those contracts. She needs the original.
I've got the original.
Okay.
No, she, he's got one of the copies.
I'm sorry, we're back in.
Oh, I'm sorry, back on that. Yeah, I'll, I'll get the original.
That is the original, how?
Already is. Okay, if I can have that envelope that came in. As proof that came in by deadline.
All right.
And then I'll just wait on that, see if I... Yeah, I'll get it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Shelby.
Let me, let me give one here to Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks, man.
I'd like one. And Sonia needs one for her file. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Perfect. Now, just gonna jump right back to the cooperative ambulance service contract.
She just got practice, Judge.
Yeah. Bring the other one back. Hey, I'm not even, I'm not gonna join in on that.
Thank you, Judge.
Oh, boy. All right. Uh, the contract is the same one that we've been using for quite a few years. Uh, it comes from the, uh, hospital for the cooperative EMS. It has been reviewed by Brad Stevenson. The dollar amount does match up with the amount that we have budgeted to fund the hospital, which is eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. And, uh, you guys have anything to add on that?
The hospital has signed off on it. I'm still waiting to hear from the City of Eastland and the City of Cisco when their next meetings are, so I can pass that on to them. Other than that?
Mm-hmm.
And I will get Brad to sign off on it, too.
Okay. Well, he signed off. I've got one here. He signed off on it.
That's a copy. I told him, asked him not to sign off on it, so.
Okay. He signed off on it. Can we have a motion then to accept and allow me to sign the cooperative ambulance service contract for, uh, EMS that operates out of a hospital?
Motion seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that carries. Do you want me to sign this as a placekeeper?
No.
Till you get it back? No?
No.
Okay.
I would like for you to sign mine, please.
Okay. Right here. And?
Oh, that's the other one.
Oh, you left the other, okay, all right, get it.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Now, Tammy is no longer the mayor at Cisco. It's Stephen Foster, Stephen Forrester, Forrester, who's the mayor.
S.T.E.P.H.E.M.
Hmm, I think so. What do you think, Sheriff?
Okay.
His last name is Forrester.
P.H.
P.H. Then F.O.R.R.E.S.T.
F.O.R.E.S.T.E.R.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Good.
And now... Do you have anything you need on that, Kathy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item number ten is set county holidays for twenty twenty-three. And Kathy has that before us here. Questions, comments? Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Fifteen days.
Sixteen.
About what normally is?
No, it's sixteen.
Sixteen? Oh, Kathy, you left it down on the day.
Sixteen. I told Andy y'all could add whatever you wanted to, but no takeaways. Basically, it's the same. Same days, no new days added, other than, you know, recognized federal holidays.
All right. Any questions or comments on the proposed Eastern County twenty twenty-three holiday schedule?
I'll make the motion approve.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the proposed twenty twenty-three holiday schedule. All in favor say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Thank you, and I'll get copies out to every office.
Thank you. We shouldn't send Bill right one, because he always asks me that.
We do, and you know, I have personally taken him one before.
And I drive right by his office, I could throw one out. Discuss and consider request for county auditors to perform an audit of the chapter fifty-nine seizure funds for constable precinct one and constable precinct two. And...
Uh, neither one is here, so I'll, uh, request it.
Okay.
Um... For both precincts.
All right. So can we have a motion to allow or to require the county auditors to perform an audit for chapter fifty-nine seizure funds for constable precinct one and constable precinct two?
Motion seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that carries. Okay, I'm gonna let Kathy get caught up. All right. All right, item number twelve, discuss, consider declaring an old propane tank as salvage and donating it to the Cisco Fire Department for Training, Commissioner Raines.
It's that old tank that's set out beside the shop. We then used it for several years, and then I got a letter from the railroad commission saying we had to take it out of service. So we just disconnected it and moved it. And Walter come by and asked if they could have it. They will not put propane in it, but they're gonna use it as a training simulator at their training facility out at the airport.
Okay, okay. All right. Any general questions or comments? Uh, we need to declare that as salvage. We need a motion to declare that propane tank as salvage and donate to the Cisco Fire Department. Uh, and this is from the precinct four barn.
Motion seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that carries. Item number thirteen is a nine-one-one update, cooperative dispatch update. Sheriff?
Everything's going good. Of course, we're at the end, closing out the year and going, and of course, in the last month, the air conditioner went out. It goes, we got it all replaced, and everything's going good. They've been instrumental in helping us, uh, integrate this E four stuff and, uh, with the rest of the county. And, uh, it's going good out there, I think. Everybody's still there, so that's a plus.
Whatever you updated corrected, maybe that will hear anybody, because I haven't heard anybody in...
Yeah, we fixed this. As soon as you said that, we fixed it. It was, it was a little setting in there that we had to go change. But that's going well, too. Um, we've got the, some of the fire departments are getting, some of the fire departments have some obscure kind of radios, and they're having to get with their radio guys. But, uh, they're getting on these relays. We've got a bunch of law enforcement on the relays now, and so it's, it's all coming together. It's forever, but it's coming together.
Anyone else have any information on nine-one-one or dispatch? All right. With that, then, we will move on then to item number fourteen, county burn ban. Of course, the burn ban is in effect. Uh, we got a little bit of rain. I'm not sure we got enough. We don't have another meeting for two weeks, almost fifteen days.
Cisco had a big grass fire, you know, Sunday.
Someone was, uh, belling haze when I heard. It was out by the kids' house.
Yeah, it's out by.
Yeah.
Really?
Uh-huh.
Well, I've heard two tents, four tents. Hmm, I don't think that's really enough to take off the burn ban. That's just me, so.
It hasn't lasted long.
Yeah, it won't, it'll be gone before we get back to a meeting, unless we have a special meeting. I know y'all like those, but we don't wanna have too many of them. All right, anybody wanna make a motion to take off the burn ban that we currently have on? Okay, here nothing, we'll move on then. The burn ban remains in effect. Item fifteen is personnel matters. Uh, Sonia's got that.
See, this report is eight thirty-one through nine thirteen. No new hires and two employment terminations.
Okay. All right, anyone else have anything to add for personnel report?
Guys, we're real short-handed in the jail, so if y'all know anybody at all, maybe help to spread the word, or talk to some family members or friends or whatever. I appreciate it.
All right.
Your family members ain't going. They're already in there. I know.
I didn't know these wanted somebody to work and go get in there. I could have them out getting in there.
Sorry, Judge.
Okay, we're gonna move on then. Can we have a motion to accept the personnel report as presented?
Motion.
Questions, comments? Can we have a motion then to certify this revenue and to allow expenditures as explained?
Motion seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that carries. Okay. Sixteen D is emergency amendments.
I'm not seeing emergency amendments.
I didn't have any. All right, no action on sixteen D for emergency amendments. Sixteen C, the amendment changes by phone.
Pretty standard amendments, this thing.
All right, since it's this time of year, sometimes you get two different fiscal years. Nine years, that's what it changes most of the time. Anyone got any questions or comments about this, uh... Amendment changes by phone on sixteen C?
No, sir.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Okay, sixteen B.
Chiefs.
You already seen that. I'm probably got to ask.
Uh, financial position as of October the seventh.
Can we then have sixteen B report financial position now, Sonya? This is as of October the seventh.
This is as of October seventh. And, uh, by seven, as your cash position for September.
You take the chart?
Yeah.
First thing you want, Brad?
I was glad they did, I just gave Sonya a chance, let's just take it on.
She asked for help, I did, so, just think if you wanna come on up.
Okay, so this is the un reconciled balance as of October seventh. So your cash position for September, all over the main lines, your general fund, the balance and checking account was one million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, twenty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Text pool, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars and seventy-four cents. First financial bank CDs, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seven, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, excuse me, seven hundred and ten dollars. Texas bank CD, two hundred and fifty thousand, church bank CD, two hundred and fifty thousand, prosperity bank CD, two hundred and fifty thousand. Text pool fine, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Texas class, five hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-eight cents, for a total, funds on deposit of four million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Road bridge, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. Uh, go down to fund twenty-six, rent, US Treasury, coronavirus. Checking account, one million, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred, oh, sorry, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. Uh, Texas class is five hundred and four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and fifty-two cents, for a fund on deposit for the ARBA funds, two million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents. The rest of the funds are listed. Still pages only. With a bottom of page four, bottom right-hand column, funds on deposit, eleven million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Two total pages. My statement of revenues and expenses, this is for September, this is actually for, for October seventh. So for September, revenue was two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, eighty-nine cents. Expenses, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-three cents in general fund. Road bridge revenue, twenty-six thousand, four dollars and seventy-one cents. Expenses, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, four hundred and eighteen dollars and thirteen cents. Last all listed. The new maturity file is, the by segment, cash receipts is first, it's from September to September. So for September, general fund. Beginning cash balance, five hundred and forty, oh, I'm sorry, I cannot speak today. Five million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, ninety-three cents. Ending cash balance, four hundred and four million, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Road bridge, beginning cash balance, six hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars, sixty-two cents. Ending cash balance, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. The rest of the funds are listed. And then your last page is the scheduled fees payments. Now, so, here, leases. Off for a bridge.
All right. Any questions or comments on this, on what's I've all says, I pulled it up. May we have a motion then to accept that financial report? Motion made, seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Sixteen A is investment report.
There's none of this.
Not having those. Sixteen F is financial reports, and Kathy, all, all those off here that I have here. I've got the constable precinct one. I've got the, uh, district summary. I've got the other off. First C H, Andrew Bryan Glenn. And I've got a lot of attention from H.J. Cummings, ag agent. I've got the report from district court, collections, record, houses. Also got here, uh, registered report, nothing for district courts. And then the collection registry, precinct, uh, district court. You know what I mean? And then I've got up next is the, uh, set of collections from district court. Experience, your plan. And I guess we still have one here for, at least we're taking four. Okay, all those three. And, uh, county courts, general activity reports. And those, they're to the higher office, our real office. And also, I'll have the deposit. County courts office as well. County courts are registered, this is county court. Then I've got the report of sheriff's office. Uh, Sheriff, you wanna give us a report, anything changed?
What do you got, I have a roadie, yeah?
It's your financial report.
No, I need a financial report. No.
Okay.
I, I need to write my, my, my.
All right, so I've got the sheriff's, uh, financial report. For the modified, favor, current of the treasury. Anything else?
Before your present, Mr. President, I have, uh, there's not be a X one here. I do have, uh, several words, including the tax incentives and the DMV. No, I have one to be kept.
Guys, did you share with them about the, the grant we got? I wasn't here last time, so.
Of the files?
Yeah.
I have, if you want to, we'll talk to them.
I've been wondering that, uh, we, uh, we got a grant for ninety-seven thousand, really, for them, I, I'd asked for forty-one. So, so, we, I've been with ninety-seven, ninety-seven something, something like that, so, and that was part of, but they've already done it, it's already done deal. So we just gotta wait for the vehicles to get here, and get in, so we got a lot of, more.
Why'd they give you more, they like the amounts?
I guess so.
All right, if you have motion to accept those reports, then we just have ready to file.
Motion.
I think we got motion and second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, okay. So that's what it is, I appreciate you doing that, that is a big boost. Getting my guy, good business, running in. And not coming out of the county cats' prayers, you sure, that's good. That is good. All right, item seventeen, Bill's counting the counts. And it looks like we've got, uh, four or five accounts here.
I believe you have seven sets. Your first set is October fifth, October seventh, that is two health reimbursements to employees. Your second set should be October seventh, ARBA, this was, uh, first, the payment on nine thirty-six, this was the payment to Harvard Moss, your fire department. Your next set is September workers' comp and unemployment, actually, it's not just September, it's current quarter, July, August, September. And that's then is October fifth, comdata, this is, this is year twenty-two, it was paid on October sixth. Then we have October seventh, vouchers payable, uh, this was paid October sixth, these were employees we reimbursed for their reimbursed for expenses that were being paid by the comdata force. Um, then we have October eleventh, vouchers payable to be paid today, this is for fiscal year twenty-two. And then we have, your last set is October twelfth, vouchers payable, this is fiscal year twenty-three, this will be paid today as well. And there's signature on that's your last set, for justice court technology, fourteen thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Page five, that's their annual software support.
Did I ask that, anyone?
I have a question, does anybody know uh, voting allowance money is gonna go to people? Throw your hands.
I do not know when they're, I think it's, I think it's gonna be this or next.
This check is, okay. After the first payroll. The next week after the first payroll.
It should be in October.
In October, okay. I was asking. Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a motion to play these mails, ask. Motion made, seconded, all in favor say aye.
Is that just to include the, uh, JP tax, central suit?
Yes, thank you.
You can chuck them out.
All in favor say aye.
See, that's a battle call that I have. Was it on me?
If it was you, that would, you know, this was.
I was just talking to you, you didn't, that you did, but it's not.
Well, she did talk about that a little bit, not real.
I'm gonna figure that out, but.
Yeah.
Katie, what's on the panel?
Christina, just watching Cowboys?
Yes, sir, I'm sure.
Yeah. Sandy, I look good.
Well, we go up to my in-laws at their church some nights.
They won't let you watch Cowboys?
Well, I was playing with the one-year-old and the two-year-old. No, no, I'm playing one-year-old. I was playing with the base. My breakdancing breakdown.
And possibly airplane, the Cowboys, yeah.
Yeah, walk over. I was actually taking a nap with the baby.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn, press report?
Yes.
Second, second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, and we are adjourned. We'll have our next meeting on the, what's it, twenty-fourth? Twenty-fourth.